May 4th, Meeting of Tiffin City Council. Do we have any suspensions or motions? Mayor?
I guess, Mr. President, requesting suspension of ordinance 2052. That is the annexation of land. 3.816 acres in Clinton Township. We're asking for suspension of this mainly because we are also tonight approving the zoning. And if we approve this, it's all approved as far as zoning to the city and zoning classification all at once instead of it's in the city but no zoning classification. It's all said and done tonight. I know Brent, I think, wanted to say a few things on that unless I covered it all.
And now let me add just a couple of things. As the mayor pointed out, that the zoning ordinance 20-20 is up for third reading. And you really can't zone property before it's annexed. So you really should do those same night. And also, I've been working with Nick Dutrow, and he's been in contact with Development Solutions. They're the owners of the property. You may recall that this property involves an expansion of the spec building. And Development Solutions, they're working with a business prospect. And I understand they would like to see, as they're working on this deal, they'd like to see the city make the eventual decision to annex the property and zone it. And so that maybe that decision tonight, passing those items to legislation, might be helpful to that deal to bring the business prospect to the city, I understand. So, you know, those are the additional reasons why I would recommend that you suspend 20-52, suspend the third reading. You'll read it for a second time tonight, suspend the third reading, and pass that this evening. Any questions?
Makes sense. You okay with that, Steve?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anything else?
You know, Rich, if I could.
Yeah, Mayor?
We also are requesting ordinance 2059 be suspended. And that's just not knowing how long into the year people are going to be able to utilize their rentals out at the parks, including the barn. We would like to appropriate $2,500, which is approximately the figure that is outstanding. We probably won't use all of it, but we hardly have any money that we have in a refund line for this because typically we never have to issue refunds for the barn rental or shelter rental. Well, we've got several of them coming up here very soon. And if they're unable to resume having parties based off of the governor's order, we're going to have to issue refunds. We don't think it's right. So we're going to do one of two things. We're either going to offer a refund or we're going to offer, if it's a continuing type of thing, like a lot of families reserve these every single year, the same weekend for family reunions, we'll just offer them that they can carry it forward to next year and not have a fee to pay. But if they want that refund, we're going to give it to them now. So that's why we're asking for the appropriation $2,500 so that we can issue those refunds in a timely manner and people aren't waiting for them if they request it.
Okay. Don, did you sign that?
Did I? I couldn't get in the room.
No, you didn't sign it, I think.
I think it's Ben, there's a budget.
Ben signed it?
Wouldn't that be a budget?
No, yes, it was Ben.
Yeah, it was Ben that would have signed it.
Okay. You okay with that, Ben?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Rich, the other item that I would mention regarding the renewal note ordinance, and I'm talking about ordinance 20-61.
Yeah.
Working with our bond council and others, we have a schedule already established that you could have three readings of this ordinance. That's why I was prepared and submitted tonight for introduction. And we've got it scheduled so that immediately after passage on June 1st, they'll beginning the pricing and selling of the notes so that the funds would be available at the time that the current one-year note renews in the middle of, or comes due, I should say, in the middle of June. So we won't need any suspensions. We've got the schedule worked out for that.
Okay, good. Good planning.
Yes.
Is there anything else?
Rich, I guess, if I could, I have a question. Until it's read?
Can you? You're breaking up on me.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have a question on one of the reasonings behind one of the ordinances, but I don't know if I should just wait until it's read during our actual meeting or if I...
Bring it up now if you want. What is it?
So it's for ordinance 20-58. I know this is the second night, but in looking back in the original request that was prepared for it, I'm just trying to understand, especially with being the council representative for TSEP, the exact reasoning behind it. So in looking back in the original request, it says that Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC would like an extension for six months based off of the negative economic impact from COVID. It also talks about agreement that we have with Development Riverfront Development LLC requires continued progress towards the completion of the project. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, is the reasoning for the six-month extension because they financially don't believe they can continue the project, continued progress of the project?
I'm gonna, Mayor or Brent, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can respond to that. My understanding is that Tiffin Riverfront Development, they, because of the uncertainty of COVID-19, the impact, the financing that they have cannot proceed as it is right now. But that may change, you know, as we become a little more understanding of what's going to happen with the impact of the pandemic and what will happen in our area. And right now, the contract requires that both parties, but the buyer must make continued progress towards the purchase of the property and eventually begin the construction of the property by the end of this year. And as of right now, because of the uncertainty of the financing because of COVID-19, they cannot make that continued progress that they were on, I guess, a track to do. So that's why they wanted six months. And at that point, then hopefully everybody would understand the impact and whether they can proceed forward with the transaction or not.
So, okay, thank you for that. So I guess I'm a little confused just based off of attending the TSEP meetings and reading through some of the minutes because it was my understanding that their financing was in place a while ago. But now we're saying there's a possibility of it being on hold or not in place because in reading back through things, it looks, it was clearly stated that financing was in place. So I guess I'm just trying to understand the contradiction there.
Yeah. I don't know if you know, Mayor, more particular about their financial...
Just going to, I mean, it's a public record, so I was just going to read Eduardo's email that he sent with his reasons right in it. That way, there's no confusion as far as why he was asking for this. So I'll leave out the unpertinent sections. I'll just leave the part, I'm not going to put out all the things that he said wishing that we're doing well, et cetera. Unfortunately for the project, we have all been working so hard on for the past three years, the impact of jobs, financial markets, and demand is unknown and will not known until we can get out of the quarantine to see what the true impact of COVID-19 has had on our economy in the timeframe of recovery, whether it's swift or prolonged. Therefore, I am submitting this email as a request to Tiffin City Council to provide an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement that extends all terms and conditions, including closing dates and additional six months from the date listed on the agreements and allows for one additional six-month extension at the buyer's discretion, which that part we said no to. We only said we're willing to do the six-month extension as is of the contract. The additional time is critical to keep the project alive, and it is possible that I may need additional extension in order to not abandon the project altogether. So that was his email. And I'll forward this, I'll forward this to all of you council members now. It's a public record, so there's nothing to hide. So I'll send it to you all right now so you can have it in front of you.
Okay.
On its way right now.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions, Bridgette?
I don't think so. Yeah, I'll take a look at that, Mayor. Thank you for sending that over. I just, I just wanted to be clear on what we were talking about just because it seemed like it was a little contradictory, but thank you.
Good questions. Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve?
Ken.
Ken?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Since we're talking about ordinances, and I guess I can wait till the regular meeting to ask the question, but ordinance 2061, I know it's for the bonds, et cetera, and there's five two-sided pages and 17 sections. Are we city councils supposed to understand these 17 sections or this is all financial lingo and not be too concerned with?
We have high-priced attorneys that write this stuff and they understand all of it. I don't want to be flip about it, but no. I mean, general thesis of it, yeah, I think, is in the ordinance. But as far as the boilerplate and everything that goes along with it, no, we're not, you're not required to understand all of that.
But I will add, we have special bond council that does prepare that. That's not a document that I prepare. Most, if not all municipalities, have a specialized attorney that deals with any financing issues. If there's any part of that, though, if you want to go through and, Ken, if you have any particular questions, I will be more than happy to try to answer your questions at a meeting or outside a meeting. If I can't answer it, I'll get a satisfactory answer to you. But in a sense, you know, what it does is it allows for us to issue notes in anticipation of bonding this in the future. And the amount of the principal amount of the notes is at $3,405,000. Okay? And it's a one-year transaction, so we sell notes to finance this ongoing debt. It's a renewal note because we did this in the past to finance improvements out on the west end of town, Progress Parkway in particular.
Okay. We don't need to put this into minutes, but no, I have not read any of those 17 subsections, so I wouldn't have any questions at this time.
When I said high-priced attorneys, I wasn't talking about our law director. He's overworked and underpaid.
Now, we have somebody smarter to prepare this one.
I don't know about that.
I'm the second smartest person in the room. Maybe I could help. Someone mentioned that.
Did anybody volunteer for that?
No comment.
All right, is there anything else for committee whole? Okay, seeing nothing, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. All right, I'd like to call the May 4th meeting of the council to order this evening. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Gilligan.
Would you please join me in the Lord's Prayer? Our Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses.
All right. You still have, you have your flag, Dale? We just lost sound. Dale?
There we go.
There it is. All right, there's your flag.
Look behind Dale, we'll ask for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will call the rule, please.
Councilman Gilligan?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Leopard?
Present.
Councilman Perry? Councilman Schuff? Councilman Schuff is muted.
Councilman Schuff is trying to come in, but he is not successful yet.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mark in present, and Councilwoman Boyle?
Let the record show that all seven members of council were present. At this time, I will call a joint public hearing between city council and the planning commission. I'd ask for the chair of the planning commission to, please take the role, please. Matt? Matt, can you hear me?
Yeah, you want me to take the role?
Yeah.
Mayor Monz?
Present.
Dale Thornton?
Present.
Rod Morrison? Bryce Riggs?
Present.
Bob Williams?
Present.
Joe Granata? Dave Martin?
Present.
We got five of seven planning commission members present, so we do have a quorum.
Thank you. The purpose for the meeting tonight is consideration of ordinance 20-25. This ordinance zones approximately 1.019 acres owned by Sabana Secca LLC for proposed annexation for township, zoned as R3 single-family residential district compatible with the land use and meeting the requirements of the city charter and the codified ordinances. Is there anyone who wishes to address the planning commissioner or city council? All right. Is anybody? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to declare the public hearing over. Thank you. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Thank you.
I gotta back up here a minute. I gotta apologize. Did, we're kind of messed up. My, I'm apologizing here. My, my computer, was there someone who wanted to make a comment during the public hearing? Did somebody come in?
Rich, hold on just a second. I do have someone that now has raised their hand. Hold on.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. Say your name, please.
Nancy Price.
Okay.
Work with me here. This is new on Zoom for me.
Okay.
I am one of the neighbors to the land that you guys are speaking of.
Okay.
Can you tell me what, is it just the two parcels that are adjacent to the roads?
Matt, do you want to answer that?
Yeah. Does Nancy have video capabilities? I can share my screen if that would be helpful.
Sure.
She does, she can see.
Oh, she can't.
She can see, yes.
Yeah.
So it's the, it's the piece of land in between the eastern extension of Continental Street, which is actually in the township and just east of Nelson Street. So it's just south of the easterly extension of Continental and just east of Nelson Street. So a piece of the property to the south is already zoned R3 single-family residential. The applicant is looking to, has filed a petition to annex the hatched-in area to the city of Tiffin. And the zoning classification that is being proposed for that piece of land that's being annexed is R3 single-family residential since the area to the south that's already within the city of Tiffin Corporation limits is already zoned R3 single-family residential.
Okay. So with the, and I believe I spoke with Ann Forrest last week a lot about this, and my concern was, is this going to be turned into dormitories for Tiffin University?
I do not believe that's the ultimate goal of the applicant, but the ultimate goal has not really been officially announced to us of what the proposal is by Sabana Secca LLC.
Okay.
But R3 single-family residential does not allow, that zoning classification does not allow for dormitory living. Dormitory living would have to be in an R4 multifamily residential zoning district. So my guess is that that would not be the proposed development for that property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for your call, Lucy.
There's another person with that would like to talk, Mr. Prue.
Good evening, Attorney Jim Prue, and I represent Sabana Secca. And I just wanted to address the question that the previous person had. There is no, no plan for dormitories.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Do we have anyone else?
Rich, if I could just explain the procedure that will follow at the conclusion of this hearing, the matter is referred to the planning commission. They will meet and they will then present a written recommendation on the proposed ordinance, and I assume it will be submitted by the next meeting, council meeting, which is on the 18th of this month, at which time council may take the matter, the ordinance off the table and read the ordinance for a second time and then proceed with third reading at the first meeting in June and vote on whether to pass the ordinance. So that's the procedure. Matt, can you also tell us when the planning commission is scheduled to meet and hold a public meeting to further discuss this proposed ordinance?
Yes, so the planning commission has already scheduled the follow-up meeting for next Tuesday, May, what was that, 12?
12, yes.
At 3:00 PM. And press release with the Zoom login credentials will be going out tomorrow.
Okay. I see some other names showing up here. Does anyone else have any comment? Mark Leahy, you have?
Yes.
You have a comment?
Yes. My brother and I own Sabana Secca, and we have no intentions of adding dorms or anything else. We're looking at building lots. So housing is what we'd be looking, single-family, single-family housing.
Okay.
That's, that's all it is. We want to make a nice area out there is really what we plan on doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see two other names up here, but they're muted. Does anyone else have a comment?
Mr. Foal, they show up because I have them as being able to talk. That doesn't necessarily mean they have something to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no more comment, I'm going to, I'm going to declare the public meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance. Now we'll get back to, get back to the agenda. I apologize for moving ahead here too quickly, but everyone receive a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings.
I have a...
Go ahead. We're breaking up here. Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the meeting minutes, on Mayor Monz's dissertation, if you will, he has ended the facade enhancement program and moved the remaining dollars back into the general fund. I keep seeing all these requests for transferring money back into different funds. Is this something we need to address or this is just a done deal?
Transfer the funds back into general fund?
Where exactly is it, Ken, so I can find it?
It's the third paragraph on the minutes. And about the fifth line down, you just said you moved it or we're going to. And I just keep seeing these requests to move transfers monies, and I thought maybe that's something...
No, we haven't transferred the money. We just ended the program. If we don't spend it, return to the general, we'll close the purchase order out.
Okay.
If council wished to take action, they could transfer it at any time. Or it just goes back once the order's closed out. So it's really up to the pleasure of council. We'll probably come to council at a later date once we have a larger list of changes and get some of these monies moved back into general fund. But yeah, it was administratively, I informed TSEP that that program is done for the year unless the economy completely turns around and changes and that we will not be taking any new applications, that the money that has already been doled out, obviously, we can't ask for back, but anything that has not been spent will sit there and return to the general fund when needed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Oh. Tyler, do you have a comment? Okay. Hearing none, without objection, the minutes are approved as presented. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gilligan?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle?
I'll report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment? Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilwoman Yana Toono.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewer, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Shuff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to reports of the officers. His Honor Mayor, Aaron D. Monz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate council meeting this evening. It's been interesting the last few weeks at the city here. We're, of course, continuing to monitor our financial situation as outside of the actual pandemic itself. That is our greatest concern. We want to let everyone know that income tax returns for the month of April were downright terrible. We collected more than $350,000 of less revenue in April this year than last year. So April 2019, we brought in $1.2 million. April 2020, it was only $844,000. So it's a delta of more than $350,000. I know I've been explaining to council that we've been having our department head meetings and discussing areas that have been cut. We've made many changes here at City Hall and all of our offices. We basically eliminated anything that is not absolutely an essential expense, any kind of travel, any kind of training, unless it is mandated and necessary, has all been eliminated. We've even cut back on the amount of overtime when it's allowed to be utilized, et cetera. Both police and fire drastically reduced the amount of overtime that they're incurring. And you all know the decision that was made right before our last meeting as far as the Parks Department. We're still waiting on, on action on items such as fireworks, pool, et cetera, but the summer programs were done away with. I will give Bryce Kuhn credit. He stepped up. They're going to try to do some virtual park programs and different things online for kids and members of the community to try to at least still keep some things going. But even as, as the governor announced this past, late last week, that he banned park programs and events and day camps through the end of May. And we all know that we needed to have folks staffed and hired by now. They needed to be doing all of their training so that they knew what they were doing in their jobs and roles. So I think that was absolutely the right decision moving forward. And it's tough. It's not one that we wanted to make. But I know Bryce and his small staff at the Parks Department are going to do everything they can to try to give kids still some neat little things this summer. While they may not be in-person camps, they're going to try to do some virtual things and whatnot. So I've got to give them credit for that. But we're trying to get our hands right now around the financial impact. So I'm attending my weekly mayor call that we're having with the other mayors in the state of Ohio. And it's the same thing. They're telling us to expect anywhere from 10% to a 30% hit to income tax revenue. I'll tell you, 10% alone is a million dollars. Every percent, or every 10% that we do is about a million dollars. So, you know, we've got approximately 10 million worth of revenue every year. And even to lose 10% of that is, is just a significant setback for us here at City Hall. The Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Mayors Association are both really fighting right now for another stimulus package to try to get relief to cities. Unfortunately, there's no certainty that anything like that is coming. And if you even look at the money that the state of Ohio has made available to cities through the federal stimulus funding that came down, it's very specific on what we can use it for. I thought there was a great example of it. So we could use the, the money to install sneeze guards at every department if we wanted, and it would be fully reimbursable. Yet we're not allowed to spend a dime of that money to keep our police and fire staffing up. Two agencies that we know are on the front lines dealing with this pandemic and any other health and life safety issue. You can't spend a dime to help keep your police and fire departments running, but yet the money is unlimited when it comes to installing things like sneeze guards and, and buying Purell. So it was one of those things that, you know, the federal government tried to do something good. And in reality, I think there's going to be a lot of money left on the table because they're not making it available for the things that cities really need. And they're making it for these items that, that really are not nearly as necessary. So we're continuing to work with the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Mayors Association to try to really push for either a reappropriation of that money or new rules behind it, et cetera. But we'll keep you updated as things go forward. But budget's very tight right now. We're not going to lie. $350,000 in any given year would be a significant slam to the budget. However, this is just one month in. There's no telling what the next couple of months are going to bring. I'm sure that you all by now have seen that a lot of medical facilities were able to begin operating already last Friday on the 1st of May. What we're hearing from a lot of our local offices, especially Dennis and Orthonis, is they can't get their hands on any PPE they need now. So they said, well, we're allowed to go back to work, but we have no access to any of the things that we need. So again, there's kind of that disconnect, I think, a little bit between the state and what's really going on here locally. So, so that's unfortunate. We're trying to work some of our channels to see if we can help out some of our local folks to acquire any of the PPE. Now, one thing, we have a local task force that Beth Schweitzer at the Health Department has put together. And one item that we pushed here locally that we were excited to see included was the fact that retail businesses could start doing by appointment sales starting last Friday. The group really pushed for that. State Representative Ryaniki helped us as well. And we were able to get through some of the efforts that were done with this task force and sending the information in our plan to the state that was approved. So as of last Friday, all of the mom and pop retail stores that met all of the requirements were able to start opening for single guests or single-family type visits, but they had to be by appointment. They weren't allowed to open the doors yet. So we view that as a win to at least start getting them up and running right now. Starting today, office environments are able to go back. However, the governor is urging any kind of office environments, if you can work from home, to continue to do. So with that, I know that you all were included in last week's email. We're still going to keep municipal buildings closed through at least the end of May. There's really, like we've said time and time again, there's no business that is required where people actually have to come in. We're able to handle our work over the phone, over email, by faxing. So we've been able to get everything accomplished that we've needed to. It's been a little different, but I can tell you, we're on the phone, we're in a Zoom meeting like this nearly around the clock as far as things go. So we're just going to keep this building closed for at least the next month. I know the city administrators talking about getting different things like the sneeze guards installed and some Purell stations, things like that. That gives us another month to try to get these things in place to better protect our employees before we have just everyone, you know, entering into the building constantly and all the flow of traffic returning to normal. So we want to, we want to open as quickly as possible, but at the same time, as safely as possible here at the city. Today, the brush pile and compost site did reopen at the Water Pollution Control Center. Now that the governor allowed for the opening of construction and landscaping and manufacturing businesses, we determined that we would go ahead and open that site because we feel it meets the criteria. I give Kevin Hughes and City Administrator Thornton a lot of credit. They developed a plan with traffic to allow only a certain amount of vehicles into the site at a time so that social distancing can be implemented. The cars then just line up at a stop sign. They wait for the next vehicle to pull away. The early indications from Kevin today, it's working very well. It was very heavily used, but that site is open back to normal hours effective today. And unless we have serious issue with it, there's no plans to change the hours or close it down or anything like that. So glad to see it's back. And then also starting on the 12th of May, retail and consumer services can begin their work as long as they're meeting all the requirements that were put out. So I would encourage any business that is unsure of the requirements, a couple of things they can do. One, they can go on the coronavirus website the state of Ohio has put out. It has two sections listed there. One is mandatory requirements. Those are the obvious items that you have to do in order to open. The other are suggested guidelines that they really hope you want to implement, but they're not saying they're required. Very simple. They're one-page documents. So anyone that operates that kind of business can quickly look at it and say, okay, I meet these requirements or I don't. So it's great to see the state of Ohio safely and slowly starting to reopen so that we can get our economy back and people back to work. Because we see the hit that we're taking here locally, trying to be as proactive as we can at City Hall to make any necessary cuts. Because the last thing that any of us want here is any kind of layoffs. We know that we need our, our safety forces and our park staff, et cetera. We need to keep them up. And we really want to avoid that. That's why we're being so proactive, trying to cut any of these budget items like the facade enhancement program out. I will say, we've started to renegotiate any contracts that we can with the city. We have come to an agreement with David Zach and Dean Keller at the Tiffin Seca Economic Partnership on a one-year extension of that contract, but it will have a 20% reduction in our city's rate for this one year of the contract. That will save us additional money here at the city. The same is being done with regional planning. They're going to reduce our expenditures by 20% as well for that organization. So we're starting to go to a lot of these organizations and say, we understand that we still need to pay you to do work for us, but what can you give back to the city right now in our time of need? Because it's hard for us to justify a lot of these items if we're looking at making very deep cuts. So I thank David Zach and Charlene Watkins and the other folks involved on helping bring some of those costs back. Every department is looking at their budget. We've said, even if it's something as a $500 expense or $250 expense that you can give back to the general fund, we're asking people to really get down in the weeds of their budget and cut anything that they possibly can so that we were in the best financial position going into later in the year. Also with that, we've got, like I talked about, Beth Schweitzer has her health, her COVID-19 task force here in the community. But I formed also a small business task force aimed at helping a lot of our small businesses in the community. The first type of businesses that we're tackling right now is the restaurant industry. I was on a call with the Municipal League and John Husted last week, and they told us that they're expecting 40 to 50% of restaurants in Ohio may close due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And to me, that number is unacceptable. So we need to do what we can here in Tiffin to try to help our restaurants so that we're well below that 40 or 50% number. We know we're going to lose some. There's absolutely no way to get around that. There are restaurants and other businesses that are not going to be able to reopen following the pandemic and the economy coming back. But we're looking for ways that we can help them. So we have scheduled this, this task force that I formed, we've scheduled three meetings, just like this with Zoom, that we are going to invite local restaurateurs to join us and give feedback. Any ideas that they have from the way out there to the very practical. And then we're going to see which of those items that we can help implement that. So we may be coming to city council asking for passage of new laws, new rules, anything like that, that can potentially help our restaurants and other small businesses as we get through this. So those meetings are scheduled for, the first one is this coming Wednesday, the 6th, at 9:00 AM. We then have this coming Friday, the 8th, at 3:00 PM. And then also, the final one is Monday, the 11th of May, at 9:00 AM. So we've got three of them set up. We've got a great group of people that are really dedicated to trying to help this succeed. And we want to hear from the small, from the restaurants, like I said, first, what their ideas, what ideas do they have? You know, one of the things that I thought that I put in my introductory email is, I don't know, how neat would it be if we could allow a lot of these, these restaurants to occupy some of the, the public space, for example, and put tables up and down, you know, Washington Street and Market Street that extend past just the facade of their building, as long as they have, you know, the necessary space for ADA compliance, and as long as the building that they're going in front of, of course, says it's okay for them. Or downtown, you know, you've got the, the beautiful green space with the trees over by Krogan Bank. What if Jolly's wanted to set up some picnic tables there and offer additional outdoor dining? So those are some of the items that I kind of had in my mind, but I'm not a restaurant owner. I've never owned a restaurant, operated, or even worked at one. So we want to hear what ideas they have, because we may find that's not workable. We may find that's great, and we can expand it citywide. So this task force is going to listen to every idea that they have, kind of sift through them, figure out what is practical, what can be put in place. And we'll be coming back to council if there's any new legislation that we need from all of you. So just be looking forward to that. Tyler, I did email you, being that you're the Economic Development Chair, I'd like you to be a part of the commission. I can't have all the council. So we have all the council, and we get into public meetings laws and whatnot. But I would like to have a council representative there, Tyler. So if you're willing to join us for any of that, I would like you to, since you're the Economic Development Chair, if you're not able to, let us know so we can get another council member on that task force. But I think it'd be very helpful to have someone there from council.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. You, check your email. You've got the calendar invite for that. So any restaurant owners or managers, GMs, that would like to join us and give feedback at any one of those meetings, or if they want to join all three, they can. They just need to get ahold of either me, Denmark Toronto at the Chamber, or Amy Reinhardt at Seca, and we can get the link to be able to join that meeting and get it scheduled in there for a time. So that is that item of business. Other things, I know I've talked for a long time. I apologize. Just a couple of other quick things. The, the bulk pickup has been put off. We're still going to do it sometime this year. At least that's the goal. That was originally scheduled for the first week of June. We're going to put it off until later in the summer. Once the governor further relaxes the stay-at-home order and allows for that sector to start doing the types of things that they need to do, we will have the bulk pickup. It's just not going to be the first week of June like we'd originally scheduled. But we will get it done a little later in the year. Already covered the brush drop-off site being opened back up. And I do want to let everyone know, I found out late today from the United Veterans Council that they have indeed decided to cancel the Memorial Day Parade. If there was any question about that, they've decided that they are canceling it for this year. They thank the community for all the support over the years. And they have now actually handed off the baton, and Your Legacy Credit Union is taking over the Veterans Day Parade every year because the Veterans Council just continues to shrink. There are less and less of them. And they, they said they just aren't able to do it, which I understand. If you look at the numbers from where they were years ago, they have been reduced quite a bit. So Your Legacy Credit Union is taking over the, the kind of ownership of the Memorial Day Parade, but it is canceled for this year. But I just want to thank, I know Denny Birkin and Jody O'Million and all of the folks with the Memorial Day Parade. We really thank them for their service for the last 20-plus years of organizing this parade. And then while we're on thank yous, I want to thank Andy Calmout, National Machinery, for the thousands of masks that they donated to the City of Tiffin and Seneca County and the City of Fosteria for first responders to keep them safe. Just a great gesture all around to do something like that, to help our first responders. We know that there's a struggle of PPE right now. So just phenomenal. That's what Tiffin continues to do, just like the mask program that's out there right now. It's, it's amazing to see how this community rallies together whenever we have issues. I thank Andrew and the folks at National Machinery for that donation. But I think I've talked long enough, Mr. President, but if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Trying to just keep things as pertinent as possible here, because you know, I, I always tend to be very talkative.
But it's all good information, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Comments? I have one comment. You made a liar of me because I got a call this weekend. Somebody wanted to know when the yard waste area was going to be open. I said it's going to probably be the end of this month. So I'm happy to hear that we've got it open. I, I know a lot of people are going to enjoy getting their stuff out of their yard.
Yep. And it will, yep, it will remain open the normal typical hours unless we have just egregious left and right violations and serious issue. It will remain open normal hours seven days a week. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for April.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for April. Total receipts for the month were $4,617,525.90. Total expenses were $3,139,027.26. At the end of April, our unencumbered balance is $1,623,021.84. For the month of April 2020, income tax receipts were $844,774.44. Comparing that to April 2019, we are down $360,965.36. The light part of, or the bright part of this is, is overall, we are only down 1.13% for the year, but that's because we were up so high the first three months. The amount that was transferred into the Fund 215 for Public Streets for April was $104,146.43. Our unexpended balance for all funds is $24,526,459.90. That's the same as the bank balances for the same time period. That concludes my report. If anyone has any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the finance? Councilman Gillig.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I would so move that we accept the Finance Director's Report and Bank Reconciliation as presented.
I think we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Leppard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the Finance Director's Report. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One item, and this involves Ordinance 19-79. That's the ordinance that was proposed. It's on the table for amending the zoning map involving Dollar General's proposed development up on near Six's Corners. The Zoning Board of Appeals scheduled a meeting for May 19th at 3 o'clock by Zoom, and they will consider at that time an area variance proposed by Dollar General. If that is approved, then that means that there will be a report back to council following that meeting, and then council may take action to bring the Ordinance 19-79 off the table and vote it down, because it no longer will need to be rezoned because of the area variance. So they're pursuing a different way, kind of a compromise, if you recall. It's been 45 days or more since we've had any detailed discussions of this, but I wanted to let you know that it's on track to pursue a different way to resolve the issues. This is a public meeting on the 19th, so that a public hearing, in fact, by statute. So anyone wishing to participate may contact the City Engineers Office to get the Zoom instructions. Also, look in the newspaper for the public notice of the meeting, and there will be a link there that they can participate. Are there any questions about Ordinance 19-79, which is currently on the table for council? Ken?
Councilman Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Law Director Howard, I noticed the notice hanging up at City Hall, and it said that the people within 200 feet of the radius of something were going to be notified. And if someone asked me, 200 feet from what point, and 200 feet from anywhere cannot be many households to notify, in my opinion. Could you, someone clarify that?
Yeah, the, the requirement is by, by charter. So we're following the distance from the property, so where the area variance is involved. So that's the only specific notice that's required, but there is a general public notice, so anyone from the public may attend. Attend by Zoom.
You've answered that, but it's still 200 feet from that area. It's not a very long stretch of land.
I understand, and let me verify, and I apologize, that is not by charter. That is by codified ordinance, the zoning, the area variance. So if you feel that that's not an adequate net cast around an area to be, have a variance on property, you could bring up to council at some point a, a change of that codified ordinance. But what that means is that you need to have greater specific notice that goes out to many more properties. So, but it is by statute, but codified ordinance that you could change if you wish.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't just a random pick a number out of the air. Council approved that years ago.
Any other, any other questions for the Law Director? Kathy?
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy, I'm, I'm seeing that some of the, some of the mics are turned off here.
Yeah, most of us leave them muted, Rich, because the more mics that are turned on, the more feedback it potentially gets. So I always leave mine muted unless I'm talking.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I could understand everybody. All right. Is that the end of your report?
That is. Unless anyone on council has any questions for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
We have Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F20-24 to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance Number 19-84 to appropriate funds in the Park and Recreation Department refunds expense line in the amount of $2,500 for shelter and barn rental refunds due to event cancellations.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F20-24 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 20-59 relating to this has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
We also have Fiscal Officer's Certificate for Progress Parkway slash Fairlane Improvement Fund for Ordinance 20-61.
Fiscal Officer's Certificate will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And we have a letter from the Laird Arcade Brewery requesting council revisit the Dora issue.
Hopefully, everybody got a, everybody got a chance to read that. I'm going to assign that to the Law and Community Planning Committee. Bridget?
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the written communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are now, we are now under legislation, we're under resolutions.
Resolution Number 20-25 introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council to continue certain tax incentive agreements with local businesses and property owners, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 20-25. Councilman Leppard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of Resolution Number 20-25.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Councilwoman Yannatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 20-25. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones. Thank you. Turn your mic on.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. This Ordinance 20-25, some of these extend out to 2025, 2035, even 2040. And if that's the case, declare an emergency, just so we don't have to wait another 30 days? Could someone explain that to me again?
Law Director.
Yeah, the, the reason, Ken, is, is that there's a statute that says that when the written report of the Tax Incentive Review Council comes to City Council, it has to be approved in an effect within 60 days. The report was given to council in March, I believe, and it's had three readings. And so now it's into May. In order to meet that 60-day statutory deadline, you have to approve it as an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk for Colorado, please, on the passage.
Councilman Gillig. Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry? I'm sorry, Councilman Perry?
Yes. Yes.
And Boyle.
Resolution 20-25 passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 20-20 introduced Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately 3.816 acres of land owned by Development Solutions LLC and proposed for annexation from Clinton Township as Zone M1A, medium industrial manufacturing district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and codified ordinances.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 20-20. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for councils, I'd like to make a motion for council approval on Ordinance 20-20.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Leppard.
Second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 20-20. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote, please.
Yes, Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Ordinance 20-20 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 20-46 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept permanent easements for sanitary sewer and detention on purposes to serve properties at or near 2300 West Market Street.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 20-46. Councilman Leppard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of Ordinance Number 20-46.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Shuff?
Yes, like the second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 20-46. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-46 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 20-52 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of certain territory containing 3.816 acres, more or less, and being part of Section 18 in Clinton Township to the city of Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 20-52. Councilman Leppard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of the three-reading rule in passage of Ordinance Number 20-52.
We have a motion to suspend and pass Ordinance 20-52. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yannatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? The clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-52 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 20-58 introduced by Tyler Shuff. Ordinance approving the six-month extension of deadlines and requirements contained in the city's real estate purchase agreement with Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 20-58.
Ordinance Number 20-59 introduced by Ben Gilligan. Ordinance amending the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to appropriate $2,500 for the Parks and Recreation Department to pay shelter and barn rental refunds.
This is to the first reading of Ordinance 20-59.
Ordinance Number 20-60 introduced
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Where's Councilman Gillig? He's not showing up here.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of Ordinance 20-59 and immediate passage.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion to suspend Ordinance 20-59. And pass it. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass Ordinance 20-59. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the suspension.
Mr. President? Councilman Jones?
Councilman Jones? Councilman Jones?
You're muted.
You're muted.
I'm just trying to help out here. Thank you, Mr. President. Skipping the 30-day clause to get money back to the people in a timely fashion makes sense to me.
Okay, is there any, any other discussion?
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
There is no emergency, is there?
Oh, wait, no, there is not.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. We'll vote on the passage.
Okay, Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leppard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-59 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 20-60 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of certain territory containing 1.019 acres, more or less. and being part of section 24 in Hopewell Township to the city of Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20 dash 60.
Ordinance number 20 dash 61 introduced by Ben Gillig. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $3,405,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of improving parkway and fair lane between certain termini and adjacent city property by grading, draining, curbing, paving, parking sidewalks, curb ramps, sanitary sewers, water lines and storm sewers and stormwater detention basins and installing and improving catch basins, fire hydrants, manholes, street lighting and traffic signs, signals and signalization where necessary. In each case, together with the necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, including certain related and required improvements to US Route 224, County Roads 1 and 54 and Township Road 18 and acquiring real estate and interest in real estate in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20 dash 61.
That concludes the ordinance business.
Thank you. We are now under unfinished business. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Councilman Jones?
I'm getting unmuted here. Give me a second. Hang on. I should have been prepared, but ordinances are here. And cul-de-sac. Ordinance 2035, we voted on it last week. I voted yes thinking I was voting on something that may be different than what I thought I was voting on. And if it's the case, I feel bad. I have my little pictorial here. It may not even be able to see it here. But on this side here, I don't know if you can even see it. I thought a cul-de-sac, and I'm referencing Kennedy Bridge here in the second ward on Adam Street going west. If you go up there, that is 65 feet in diameter. When I voted on something, I thought I was voting on driving up here 1,100 feet, making a small U-turn and heading back out to Ella Street. Someone told me is what we voted on was coming up here approximately 1,100 feet, going into the Prenslam property, swinging around big old cul-de-sac here. And I apologize for not doing my homework, but if this is the case on this side, and I was voting for a little cul-de-sac coming back out to Ella Street and walking bicycle trail up here, is this more or less what we voted on two weeks ago?
Law Director.
Yes, it is an offset cul-de-sac. So it is, as you have drawn it, the property owner that had agreed does not own property on the other side of River Road towards the river. And so in order to properly construct it, it needed to go towards, I guess, towards South Sandusky Street, if you will, away from the river. Because it couldn't be constructed. If you go down there, it could be constructed over towards the riverbank.
Okay.
So my understanding is the proper way to have a turnaround would have an offset cul-de-sac. We have another example of that, I know, in the city. If you go down Fair Lane from Hopewell Avenue, and you go, that's an offset cul-de-sac, I believe, because we couldn't have constructed it over towards the fairgrounds. So we went to the right towards Market Street. So it's just one way of creating a cul-de-sac for a turnaround.
Okay, well, I apologize to the people of the second ward because I was saying I not going to vote on something I don't understand, and this was my understanding in my head. Turning out this, I I guess it's old business. I just wanted to apologize. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Councilwoman Yannatuno?
Just have a question. You know, we approved the binders. Are, are we going to receive them? Because I'd like to get mine together and safely put up on the shelf.
I'm sorry, you're, oh, you're, the binders?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up. Is, is the city administrator still on?
Yes. I apologize, Don, but the company has not been able to manufacture anything with COVID crisis, so we're waiting to start manufacturing again.
I hadn't even thought about that. Makes sense. I was just curious.
Okay, Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, so I just, I didn't know if I should try to schedule my Long Community Planning meeting now.
Sure.
Okay. So Danny and Steve, I'm not sure how busy your schedules look in the coming weeks.
I'm terribly busy every day.
Bridgette, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my calendar as well. I can, I could do Monday um, around 4:00 PM if that works for you guys.
You say Monday?
Monday, the 11th.
Okay. I'm good.
Um, I'll have, we might have kids in the meeting. I'm thinking my wife works, but
For you, what days work better for you, Danny? I'm sorry, I can, I never remember.
I have no idea. My wife has her schedule. I mean, I can for sure be here. She might have some kids in the background.
Okay, great. I love their input.
Yeah, agree. They can run the city.
Perfect. Okay, well, if we could plan for that, and then Rich, how do I schedule the Zoom then? Or do I?
Schedule that with Kathy.
Okay.
Kathy, I can Just email me, please, and I'll get it set up for you.
The week from today at four.
Yes, you got it.
Okay, so you want to announce the purpose of the meeting?
The only, the only, oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Our meeting's at nine that day. I thought we had Zoom tied up. Just ignore me. It's been a long day.
Problem. Yeah, so the purpose of this meeting will be to discuss the Laird Arcade Brewery requesting to revisit Dora.
Okay, and any, anything else? Anything else?
Come before the committee, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anne?
Yes, Councilwoman Boyle, if you'll please, when you have it set up with Kathy Moore, let me know the details so I can put that in the announcement. I won't be able to announce it until then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. We're getting used to this. Anyone else? I don't want to miss anybody. Not everybody shows up on my thing here, so. Councilman Jeff?
Yeah, I had a question for the mayor administration. Seeing there was a lot of comments and concern and questions as far as like the food truck coming to town for Chick-fil-A. I know they're coming this week. Do they have any plans in the future to come after that, or is it like a once a week thing? Do you know what their schedule looks like as far as repeating their visits?
Yes, they're planning to come twice per month between now and when it gets too cold for them to set up and have people walk up to the truck. So they anticipated that they would be here through October, but if it's a cold October, it may be only through September. So it would be, if it's October, there'd be a total of 12 visits this year with the truck. If it's less than that, obviously you subtract off since it's
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, your comment or your response, I think you handled that very well. I just, I've seen a lot of griping stuff on Facebook and social media, and I just, I didn't know what the future plans were for visits in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, they're wanting to come here and test the market, see how things work. I really wish we could have gotten here with the colleges in, because I think that would have even been a larger boost for them. So you know, the college students spend close to nine months of the year here, but when all is said and done, they will make, I think it's an eight hour visit that they're here, so it will be most likely 12 eight hour days that they'll be here in operation in the city.
Okay, Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I received a telephone call from Beth Boyer of 53 Acre Port. She has some concerns about wild animals, and she happens to actually live directly behind me. She said in her 40 years living in the area on the south end of town in the fourth ward, she's never seen as many skunks, groundhogs or possums. I know we don't really have a wildlife division, and she did say that she spoke with, I believe, City Administrator Thornton and, you know, received a bit of guidance, but I was just wondering what sort of suggestions we can give to the public who may have this issue. I know we have a similar issue with the deer not too long ago. Didn't know if there was a possibility we could get someone from the wildlife office to come and maybe discuss some things there. She mentioned seeing a skunk come out in the daytime, which I suppose is fairly rare. And just kind of wanted to see, you know, what we could, what information we can put out there to help any residents that may share this concern.
Yeah, on the deer, on the deer situation, we had the guys from the wildlife down in Columbus come and they gave us some ideas, but there really wasn't a whole lot we could, we could do. Does the county still have the, they still have the, what do you call it? The wildlife guy? Does anyone know? Game warden. There you go, game warden.
There is, but they, they don't involve themselves in what they would consider to be pest control. They do have a list of animal control individuals in the area that they will provide so that they could come out and trap the animals and get rid of them. I don't remember having talked to Mrs. Boyer recently. I'm wondering if there is some home in that neighborhood or other building where those pests are congregating. Do we know that?
Yes.
Yeah, what is that?
Um, it's a few doors down from Councilman Gillig's house. I, I received complaints from another person in that ward as well. It was Eric Alker. He lived right behind the gentleman. I don't want to put his name out here on blast on a meet, public meeting, but he has an overgrown yard. There's groundhogs and all kinds of stuff running around the yard. It's a little overrun. But this isn't the first I've heard of this issue. It's about the second or third time, actually.
So perhaps after the meeting or tomorrow, I could get an address where we could have people visit to see if there are any ordinance violations that we can enforce. I probably can also put Mrs. Boyer in contact with some animal pest control people, Ben, if you would like.
I'm not sure who she spoke to. She did say she was giving a list of pest control folks. So I believe she is good in that regard. It's the house between Nevin Martin's and the Coppa's house. It's the house between those two.
Oh, I believe that's where there was a death recently.
Yes.
And so the, as I understand it, the relatives live in Pennsylvania. So we'll have to try to contact them and see if we can get some assistance from them cleaning up the area if they're outside of the ordinances, and it sounds as if they definitely are.
Neil, I've got the contact information for, for the family you're referring to, so I can get that to you.
Great, I will call them tomorrow then.
Okay, I'll email you this evening.
Great.
If the neighbor, if the neighbors around the house, if they're willing, are they allowed to put up like little fenced in traps or something like that? Something that's not harmful to kids, but could the neighbors, if they want to, are they allowed to put traps up and dispose, like take them back out to the country or not in the county?
I don't see why they wouldn't be allowed to since animal control, pest control people can.
Just a thought.
Councilman Jones?
I'll make sure I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to thank Councilman Gillig for reminding me. I did have one item I wanted to bring up tonight. I also got a call from resident on Hus Street here in the second ward talking about cats, stray cats getting on a porch, et cetera, and et cetera. And we talked for 12 minutes on the phone. I told her I would do three things and maybe four. The three things I told her I would do would get a hold of city administrator, which I've emailed. Told her I would look through the ordinances to the best of my ability, and I gave her copies of three ordinances. They talk about dogs and sheep and turkeys and everything except the cat. I told her I'd bring it up here at city council for what it's worth. And the fourth thing I said would be up to her. Told her if I could come across some cage somewhere, I would be glad to set a cage up, capture the, not varmint cat, if you will. And the reason I even thought of the cages is she said she called out to the dog warden's office and someone told her that she could get a cage, she could corral it, she could take it out there. She said, what if she didn't have a vehicle? What if she wasn't physically capable of putting a cage out? So I said I'd bring it up. I brought it up. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have a comment?
In that regard, Councilman Jones, I did check. There are no cages that the city still has. You had mentioned you thought there were some cages the city used to have. We do not maintain any cages.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Anyone else? I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody.
Councilman Perry? I know there's been a, a lot of talk about this vicious biker gang that's going around, but just to rest everybody's minds, it's just me and Councilman Jeff and a few others on our scooters, so you guys, you guys are okay. We're not, we're not out to harm anyone, so.
That's reassuring.
We're a nice gang.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I just don't want, again, I want to thank Kathy Moore for saying this up this evening. Thanks for allowing us to use your expertise, Kathy. We couldn't do without you. Final thought here is God bless all of you and stay safe.
You too.
You guys.